Good evening, Council. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy?
Here.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, I'll speak up, Pauline. The next council, before we move to our consent agenda, are there any changes or additions to this evening's meeting? If not, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the February 8th council meeting. We have the approval of a park use permit, resolution of employment for the fire department. We have approval of liquor license for the hideaway, and we have approval of claims in the amount of $132,436.97. You also have approval of the payroll of $83,886.07. Any questions regarding these consent agenda items? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Seconded by Thompson. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Great, thank you. The next council will move to our public appearances, and we'll start with Russen Lippincott from the Fairfield Arts Convention Center. Good evening, Russen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I've passed out a map. I'm here to request street closings for the second annual Southeast Iowa Farm Show. What I'd be requesting is on Thursday night that we block off -- you'll see where the squiggly marks are on the artwork there. That indicates -- I expect you all to frame this in your office. That indicates the barricades. So, what I'm asking is that we keep Main to Briggs open, and then have Main Street and part of Briggs closed for tractors and various other ag equipment.
So, tell me a little bit about the Ag Show. I've never been there. Is it vendors that come and show their equipment and look for sales and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, good question. So, we have over 45 vendors, over 65 booths. They range from seed companies, implement dealers, ag lenders, anything that is a provider for ag-related business come, and they have a booth inside and around the convention center. And they use outside for different implement.
Larger equipment that you couldn't get.
Yes. Last year, we had over, I think, over 700 people through the doors. So, it's been quite an event, and this will be the second year that we've done it.
So, the end result is the benefit to the vendors that come there, right?
Well, I think it's a benefit to also the attendees. They get to see what the new technology is in farming. Our vendors from all over Southeast Iowa. What's different this year is Ross Walker is letting us use his property there across from Briggs. So, that's why we're asking to block off from the alley, the convention center to the Briggs.
And is that for display?
I believe so. Yeah, I'm not sure. Kenny Norton is our chairman of the event, and he's in charge of parking all of the equipment outside.
No live animals.
I can only add to what Russen says, because I've been very involved with the committee.
Yeah, that's right.
And the pork producers are serving lunch this year. Last year, we had the cattlemen. This year, we have the pork producers. And it really, really is interesting. I think we have a number of local people who walk through, and I think it sort of is an eye-opener to, you know, people who are not involved in agriculture. And so, as I say, I guess I would only say I would encourage you to stop that day and, you know, walk through. And hopefully, the weather will be as cooperative as it was a year ago, because it was a beautiful day, and we have so many people that the Civic Center doesn't really even hold everyone and everything. But it really is a great day for Fairfield.
Very true. And we do have a series of speakers that will be in the theater. So, it's for that 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., it is, you know, the entire facility is taken over for the Ag Show, and then Saturday night, we have a country music singer.
Mm-hmm. That's great.
It's a good use of the facility.
So, council, your request is then for Saturday, March 5th, and give it?
Thursday, March -- excuse me, Friday, March 4th, and Saturday, March 5th.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Moved by Revolinsky, seconded by Anderson. Any other discussion? Not all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Allohs opposed, same sign? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Russen, it's great. I think this is, this really shows the, you know, the versatility of the facility as well, and it is nice that we get to use the property around it. So, hopefully, we do get some great weather. Thanks. Next, we'll invite Pauline Reader, our former distinguished councilwoman and employee with the City of Fairfield. Pauline, great to see you.
I hope you're going to be glad to see me.
Oh, it doesn't matter. We're still glad to see you.
I want to thank the members of the City Council for all of their hard work, and on behalf of the city fair, I know them out of time and consideration that goes in each decision by the council. And I appreciate that the council is always trying to do what is best interest of Fairfield citizens. The council has before them a proposal to establish a permanent food court on the city park at the town square, and I'd like to share my thoughts about the establishment of this court. I would like for you to notice that my son painted one when he came back from school in 1987, and it's on my wall. It was my birthday gift, because the city park has been a part of my life, all my life. For the due of the council, I was born in Fairfield, and I'm a fourth generation of Jefferson County. So, I know a little of what I'm talking about, the history of Fairfield, the town square of Fairfield that is the heart of the community. It has been used for over 177 years. The park has been used for the concert in the park, the Art Walk, Veterans Day, school homecoming, and many, many more, and our wonderful Christmas. It is the most wonderful central park at Christmastime in any town in Fairfield, Iowa or Iowa, Iowa.
Yeah.
When residents are asked about great memories of living in Fairfield, the city squares often are shared. I know that's true for me and my friends and my family. The Fairfield Community-wide existing plan is Gold One, and one B states that the council will revitalize our community downtown as a hub of business, governor, and city activity. And I assume the establishment of a city court, or a food court. But by establishing perfect, permanent, picnic facilities in the square, the use of the park will change. I believe the food court at the park will be a nice store. Have you ever been in a park after a busy weekend and seen garbage cans overflowing with trash all over the ground? The city of Fairfield will be responsible for keeping this area clean, attractive, and it will be a big job, because they do not work only 40 hours a week. And as I came down my sidewalk and saw some of the trash along the sidewalk to the road, I didn't realize there were so many people in town that smoked. I bet I could have picked 50 cigarettes butts. I just couldn't leave it. I thought we all did, our non-smokers today, but evidently not. I understand there are many communities are turning their town squares from traditional use as a gathering place for community celebrations to a place where there's restaurants, bars. While I know this is not planned for our town square, I'd like to recommend that we cherish this place for citizens together, enjoy local celebrations and activities, as we have so many times in the past. After all, Fairfield has many parks with picnic facilities. Do we really need to turn our town square into another one? I thank you for your consideration in this matter. I also would like to make a suggestion that the comment is about what should we do with the Walker Building. I think a food court would be wonderful in Walker County, and have stations, and have the small business people that go to the farmer's market that are very creative, and have a place for them permanently, so they could sell their wares and promote our community. We have a lot of talent here, but it's not being shown. So, I want to thank you for your consideration and my suggestion that we leave our historical park alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Pauline. We appreciate your comments, and we appreciate them coming from you because of all your service and because of the great history that your family has here. And I don't think anyone disagrees with you that the importance of our park and its history and its use is something that we are all very sensitive about. There's no question about that. And the, I know, I'll let Councilman Hallie probably address this, because he went through the grant process on behalf of the council members. A lot of the initial interest in this came out of some videos that the Chamber of -- I'm sorry, that the Convention and Visitors Bureau put on for the community last year, and it was about the successful elements of a downtown. And they mentioned within that that having, if you have restaurants on the town square, having someplace designated, small parklets or places where you could put tables for people to eat, was the idea. Now, your suggestion about the area where the Tribune Printing Building would be ideal, and I think that would be wonderful. It's priced a little too high for us to purchase in order to do something like that, so if you could help with that, we would welcome your participation.
Well, this group is great for raising money. I'd be on the committee.
But that's, that was just the gen -- I just wanted to explain that to you, that that's where the whole concept and idea came from, and then it came through this planning process, and I'll let Councilman Hallie talk.
I do want to say, I represent tonight a lot of people that are really concerned, because I think every one of us at some time or other have had the use of a city park. And if you do that, if you put the court in, and of course, we have the roses on board, it eliminates a lot of people that would come to the park and hear the band concerts, and hear the speakers on Veterans Day, and the high school when they come for their homecoming, and they have their floats. Where are they going to put them? What are they going to do? We're cutting off a lot of good things.
Yeah.
And I do.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
You still have the floor.
Mayor, I would like to say that I think that we all ought to really check our pocketbooks, because we need to gain more fiscal responsibility to our own homes and certainly to the city. And I wanted to thank Tom that you decided to serve again and again. I know some of the projects that you have worked hard on, like the senior citizen building, the childcare building. I could go on and on, and some of the things that you have contributed to, and I'm glad to see you there tonight.
Thank you, Pauline.
Thank you, Pauline.
Anything else you want to speak about?
Yeah. Obviously, this isn't anything that we have any eminent action on. We don't have anything budgeted.
No, it's a vision.
Yeah.
It's not a proposal. There's no, there's no actual proposal right now. It was a vision.
How did you think?
So, if it becomes a proposal, then we'll have something to consider in terms of how much we want to do, but it'll have to be privately funded at this point, not publicly funded. So, maybe by the spring, we'll have a proposal, and maybe the proposal will be to do a smaller amount, but the roses will not be touched. This is the east-west side, not the north-south. Roses will stay.
My God, I want to tell you that I watch you every night on the council. And I can tell you that you make the majority of the things that come to the council and they vote on. So, you've been very, very, you evidently studied your before you get here.
Thank you.
I think you got it from watching you. Pauline, thank you for your comments tonight, and if this comes up to, before the council again, we'll be sure that we have a public hearing. We can invite more public input on it, but assure people that there's nothing that's budgeted or planned at this point.
I depend on you.
Yeah. We, yeah, we will make sure you're involved in that process if we get to that point. Thank you very much, and great to see you. Next, we'll invite our Beautification Commission for their annual report.
You hear me? Oh, Karen's going to go on the other side. Okay. I'm Nancy Horace. This is Karen Haring, who's also on the commission, and she's going to be my Vanna White for the night. We would like to thank the, take the opportunity to thank the City Council for its support of the Beautification Commission during this past year, because without your support, what we do would not be possible.
Thanks, Karen.
So, what you're getting now is basically highlights of our activities from 2015, and this is what I'm going to be going through with you, so you don't have to look at it if you don't want to, but basically inside is what this says. So, we started, we planted our flowers and our seasonal decorations in the concrete pots, in the window boxes in the alleys, and throughout the downtown area. And we did seasonal decorations, as I'm sure you all witnessed, if you noticed, for both the fall and the winter. These are maintained each year by volunteers. We again cooperated with the Fairfield Area Chamber of Commerce in providing the 36 flower baskets that hang around the square. And I thought that in both instances, I thought they looked especially good this past year, the variety that we picked to put in those, and we had lots of compliments about how well, how good they looked. We also had weeding and mulching done at the Alliance site, the railroad overpass on North Second Street, and at the Fairfield Little League Park. And in the spring, we sent a letter from the Fairfield Beautification Commission and Scott Vaughn that we distributed to over 100 businesses and building owners around the square, asking for their cooperation in maintaining continuity with the plantings in the nodes downtown, and also, you know, to not place things in the nodes besides, you know, the plantings that the city approved many years ago when we did those. So, this letter is again what Karen's just distributed. You can read that later. And we had very good response from that. We received another grant from the Greater Jefferson County Foundation for replacing shrubs and perennials that have died because of various, you know, weather conditions that we've had the last few years, and we were able to do that in 10 more nodes around the square. We've been phasing this because, you know, there, it's just a lot of cost to keep up with, so this is the second year that we did this. Also, in the hopes of preventing future problems with droughts/dry spells, we worked with Pam Craft to have in-ground watering, in-ground sprinklers installed in the nodes on the east side of the square. So, now those nodes are, you know, watered with in-ground system. And starting in May, of course, we started with Historical Rose Awards, which we have been doing the last couple of years with Mark Schaefer, and that is recognizing properties that are historically correct in their beautification efforts. And so, that's like a higher level even of a rose award than what we normally give out. Then we followed that in June with Dorothy Bell, a garden rose award, which is again for someone that's just, you know, kind of overachieving in just a beautiful gardening effort. And then the rest of the spring and summer, we recognize property owners who do an outstanding beautifying their property for the rest of the season. In May, we put up 36 new summer banners to replace the old ones that were very faded and tired, and they, these were designed by our local artist, Susan Kessel, and those were to, they were coordinated to hang alongside of the Celebrate Fairfield banners that we are still putting up, and even though they're also starting to get a little bit tired, but we love them so much because they are so special, because they were painted by all of the local artists, you know, in Fairfield a few years ago. We also did have to purchase some additional new brackets to replace, you know, ones that have worn out. In July, we helped plant and distribute 75 flats of annual flowers that were donated by Oakwood Nursery, and let me tell you, that was quite a chore. So, if you, you probably noticed flowers in places that you'd never seen them before, as well as we gave them out to, again, business owners at the Civic Center. We had them sitting outside, and we let people come and pick them up, so they could put them in pots and use them wherever they, you know, would, could use them. In August, we held our ninth annual Adopt a Home event, and with the help of volunteers from Cambridge Investment Research, and 15 gallons of paint that was provided by a grant from Diamond Vogel Paint and Keep Iowa Beautiful, we were able to paint another deserving homeowner's house. And you'll all recognize this house. We had a little bit of help getting it lined up, but it's located across from the entrance to the pool as you come off of Burlington Street, and it was a really great before and after. I think we might have almost done in the Cambridge crew on that job, because it was very high, and it had, it needed a lot of scraping and prep work to get that done. We also added festive holiday touches to the entrance signs. At the south entrance, there were, of course, lights, you know, lighted on the tree, and then the Beautification Commission member Lou Bolster designed a star in the east. I don't know if anyone came in that direction on Highway 34, if you would have happened to have noticed it, but it was, it was a great job by Lou. And then our final hurrah for 2015 was we launched a Facebook page. So, we hope you like us and what we do. So, to finish off, in addition to continuing our usual projects this year, we are hoping to create more awareness with residents, businesses, building owners, and, you know, people in the downtown with another round of letters like we did last year. We also will work with Pam again this year, as we have, you know, for the last several years, in just trying to keep the nodes looking good, replacing dead plants. We also had planned to, or hoped to, install another in-ground watering system for the west side of the square, so that those plants will be, you know, taken care of when we don't have rain. Also, working on enhancing some parking areas, and always, always, always looking for more ways to get the residents of Fairfield involved in beautifying their properties. And again, we look forward to working with the council and all of Fairfield's residents to help beautify Fairfield.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you, Nancy and Karen. We appreciate your report. Council, any questions on the report from the Beautification Commission?
Great job. I could say that the posts I've put on the city's Facebook page about the Beautification Commission have been some of the most popular, especially the flower giveaway.
Oh, yeah.
It's hugely popular.
Good.
The tree that was taken out by the real estate office?
Mm-hmm.
I was told you guys were interested in replanting that one. I'm trying to figure out who's going to do it.
Well, we should talk, yeah, about that, because, yeah, it definitely, they took out some shrubs and stuff, too, so that's going to need to be repaired.
Steve wants to talk about it after the meeting. It was the water department, but.
Well.
Water.
Well, that's great. That's great. Yeah, we should, you know, figure that out, you know, and see what we can come up with.
We'll figure that out.
And, oh, by the way, this picture.
The inside joke is that was a water main break, so I understand.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know what? You guys did a great job, and I think we can, you know, get it repaired without too much trouble, so.
And we can help if the name is she agrees.
Yeah.
Well, it's a whole, it's a good one.
Yeah. And the picture on the front that you got was basically one that the ledger put in for us, and that was really a serious thing that was happening, is that, you know, there were some people that thought that they could put some very interesting things, you know, in the nodes, and so we really wanted to educate people that, you know, the city did have a plan, and we had, you know, certain plans that we were trying to keep this continuity going throughout the downtown. And so, we had, like I said, some very good response to that, and I think that we're good now, so, and hopefully, that'll continue.
Great. Thank you.
Ladies, I would just like to take a moment and say thank you. I know I see you guys out when it's 100 degrees out. It's probably a very thinkless job on those days. I used to have the privilege of walking to my steps in the morning and gazing on Karen's backyard, and could only wish I had a fraction of her green thumb, but.
There's no such thing.
I really do, is, having moved away and moved back to Fairfield, we really do have a beautiful downtown, and thanks a lot in part to you guys. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for your help.
Great, thank you. I'll mention to Darren Hamilton and his property committee, we did have discussions with beautification about what came out of our work session and property, taking a look at the parking lots, so they are anxious to partner with you on that. So, I think next time you have a meeting where you're going to have that type of discussion, make sure Karen and Nancy are aware.
Okay.
Thanks. The next council will move to our action items and resolutions, and the first would be a resolution authorizing the issuance of a refinancing of general obligation bonds that we're going to be going through. Mike, if you could bring the council up to speed.
Thank you, Mayor. So, council, as you're aware, the city issued a 1.9 million bond anticipation note a couple years ago to clear up some of the negative fund balances when the city, that bond anticipation note is coming due at the end of this June. So, the resolution before you is to authorize us to refinance that into a more permanent bond structure, and to authorize us to levy the tax for the payment of that 1.9 million. In addition, you'll notice the 6.25 million dollar cap. That is, if the market will give us an interest rate that is more favorable than what is on our 2013A series, this allows us the legal authority to. This allows us the legal authority to refinance all of it to gain a more favorable interest rate if the market will bear it. So I would ask you for your consideration and approval of this resolution.
So moved? Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Anderson.
Question?
Yes, discussion.
How's the market look right now? I mean, do, are we likely to get more favorable rate? Are we likely to refinance?
Right now, the market is good. There are several factors that, that come into play. One of them is our, our bond rating. However, as you know, we've taken several steps to correct that, and I think we're in a different position than we were a year ago. So I, time will tell. If, if the market is not more favorable, we don't have to move forward with the full 6.25, but we do on the 1.9.
Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion, council? If not, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Brassmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, council will move to our public hearing on the proposed 1617 budget. We'll open the public hearing at this time and ask for a report from our Ways and Means Committee Chair Tom Thompson on the particulars of the budget, and then we'll open it up for any discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I guess initially to start off, I would like to first thank the several council members of the Ways and Means Committee, Hallie and Flornoy, that were with all the meetings. We spent a lot of time and effort on everything there, particularly with Mike and Joy attending the meetings. And, and also to all the department heads, because I know they put a lot of time and effort into the, going into these budgets. Now, to get into the not very good news, I think all of you, and I don't know if the people in the audience have a copy, but all of you, I think I had a sheet placed on your desk, base there before we got started. And just in general, we've shown what the property tax fund levies for the, the proposed is for 2016-17 is just over the $3 million. Last year, for our, the current budget year that we are now in, it was $2.6 million. So it was roughly a $383,000 increase. They've noted there below what the increases are for primarily. You know, police, we had a revenue decrease of $15,000 and it just, you know, when these things are done a year in advance, various estimates are made, they're, they're best guesses in many cases. So you're seeing like the police revenue is actually a decrease of 15,000. And you'll notice if you drop down several lines, recreation is, we revised the revenue estimate down 69,500. I mean, there were just some estimates that were made that were overly optimistic based on, they maybe weren't at the time, but they turned out to be overly optimistic. Also for the police department then, we do need to increase the dispatch for another full-time equivalent. Drop down about two more lines there, the recreation, the new center. We've estimated the utilities and the, and the insurance for that facility to be $75,000. And again, that was something that, these were not in last year's budget. These are new items. We've instituted a 2% contingency fund. That would be $80,000. And again, that's something that Mr. Harmon just mentioned. We're, we're trying to improve our bond rating and one of the things they want us to see, want to see are some reserves. And with some of the incidents that the city's experienced here within the last two to three weeks, we realized there is a need for some of that contingency. There are things that do come up every now and then. Media Center, there's $10,000 worth of equipment repair. And then some various licenses, inspections, that kind of thing, those fees are estimated again to go down 6,000. Again, the original estimates that were made the year before were just a little on the optimistic side. And then we do get into, we count, we listed what we call the combination. Several of the things that are happening this year, this year that is unusual compared to most other years, there are 27 pay periods in 2016, just because of the way the years fall. Not all of that is general fund departments, but it, it does affect every department within the city. That's roughly $100,000. There was a 1% employee pay increase, that's a total of 26,000 in total. 10% health insurance increase was 32,000. So the combination of those items, and again, they are, they are ongoing type items, is what accounted for the majority of that 383,000. The one thing that as a committee that we tried to look at and say, okay, are there other ways that we can tackle this? And I tried to give you some perspective. In order to equalize that, that 383,000 offset that, we would have to have new commercial property valued at 90% of 26,600,000. And to put that into a perspective, at least based upon the website, if you go and go to the Jefferson County Assessor and you bring up Dexter, and I'm just picking on them right now, if you, if you bring them up and the building that they have, and we're all fairly familiar with it, the one there on Grimes, is just up from the police station, in order to get that, that same valuation, that 26,600,000, we would have to have eight new Dexters. That's probably not going to happen here over the next several months anyway. You could look at it another way, rather than commercial, we could go to the residential side, and we would have to have 80 new homes at a half million dollars each in order to create that, that kind of property tax revenue. And so therefore, from revenue side, that didn't seem to be the, the kind of thing that was going to happen. We can raise parking rec fees, we can raise library fees, things like that. That is not going to solve the problem. On the other side, you look at it, we could take and, we could reduce staff. We have 66 people on staff. We could, we'd have to reduce it by eight, and they'd have to each be making at least $39,750 with benefits. So you're talking about reducing the staff somewhere in the neighborhood of 15%. And that's, it doesn't make any difference what department you want to talk about, it's just it has to be eight people within the general funds. So with that in mind, we felt it was best to, for this year, to propose the property tax increase. No one likes to do that at all, but it does give us a year then to evaluate many of the services that we have, the departments that we have, trying to figure out ways to get additional revenue. And so again, it's one of those things that no one likes to, to face it. It's a, it's a combination of, and again, those items that are there that we listed. Some of those are, are new, particularly with the rec center. It is something that's there. It's a tremendous asset to the community, by far a very nice facility. But now we have to pay for it. We have to maintain it and keep it upgraded. And also that we're seeing the effects of some of the prior years of living off our budgeted funds, in a sense. We, we had some excess, we had cash available. And we, we were able to use some of that to help keep property taxes low, lower at this point now that, that cash is not there. And some of these estimates we've had, why, now we're having to live with them. So.
Thank you, Tom, I appreciate, appreciate the overview. So the, the proposed levy would be $16,14,983. So that, that levy is lower than, than the levy last year, although as you, as you point out, because again, we had strong valuations in this year that it would, it gives us the ability to raise more cash to meet that budget. So entertain any comments or questions from the public at this time on the proposed budget? Yes? Can you come up? Sure. Can you come up?
My question is, oh, what is our bond status right now? Are, you know, where are we? Are we, you know, one, two, three? I mean, are we even, do we even, you know, are we even, you know, where are we? I mean, do we stand on our, on our, you know...
On your bond rating? You're talking about the rating? Okay. Right.
Where does, you know, Fairfield, you know, stand? Because we're asking for all this money and, and, you know, Mike talking about, you know, the monies and so forth, you know, on the rates and stuff. If we go out and get, you know, more funding and stuff, you know, they look, of course, and see what our, you know, bonding is and stuff. So I would just like to have that, just answer.
Sure. Mike, do you want to take?
Sure. We are a BAA3 with a negative outlook. We have addressed many of the items that have been brought to light by us, or to us by Moody's. Of those is our cash reserves, and that's through the reallocation of low carbon sales tax. Another one is to eliminate or reduce our overall tax ask. Or in other words, we're currently maxed out in terms of our task, tax ask. We have eliminated the emergency levy in this budget proposal that's in front of council tonight. So we're no longer maxed out on our tax asking. We're also established a financial policy which addresses spending and saving within the city of Fairfield. So we've really tackled this on a multifaceted approach. Our plan is to reapproach Moody's later on after this current fiscal year, whilst we continue to track our expenditures and our revenues very closely to ensure that we have a surplus cashier to eliminate the deficit spending that we've seen over the last seven years. So we are going to reapproach them and basically ask them for a rerate later this fall after we cross the, the June 30 fiscal year. So we feel that we're in a much better position now than we were a year ago, but there's still work to be done.
Michael, is that... We've also, I'll just make the point that we've also budgeted 100% of the local option sales tax that the voters gave us permission to use, to redirect in the last election. So all of that has been set aside so that we can build our cash reserves. We have a cash reserve target based on a percentage of our general budget that was recommended by Moody's. And we feel that we can, if we can continue to do that along with the contingency funds that we're putting together, that we can meet that very quickly, within three or four years. And, and also, you know, part of, part of the, the overall picture also is the city's ability to borrow. And right now, we are, we are at about 47% of our capacity to borrow. So we have much higher capacity to borrow. We, we won't, we, we generally don't. We try to keep it at around 50%. We always have. We're a little below that right now. But if there were an extraordinary emergency, we would have borrowing power also. So again, and you have to understand that the rating is not applicable to every bond that the city has. At this point in time, we have four bonds that are outstanding, of which only one is rated. The, the, the desire to go out and get a rating is to get the most favorable rate from the marketplace. And yes, we're not in the best position to do that right now to get the most favorable position. We recognize that. But we're going to deal with this very quickly. And just as soon as we get past our year end and we have, we can demonstrate that we have a, a much higher cash balance, that we have these new, new policies in place and that we have money reserved and we're building, I think they will turn that rating around pretty quickly. Doug?
I, I just wanted, Michael, to clarify the issuance for the 6.25 million. Only 1.9 million of that is new, and the other is to try and obtain a lower interest rate on current money that's already borrowed.
Correct. Right.
I thought maybe she misunderstood that we're asking for 6.2 new monies, and that's not actually the case.
Right, that's correct. None of the borrow are new dollars. In fact, the 1.9 has already been borrowed. Now, we have not levied for the 1.9 million. It's an interest-sparing bond anticipation note. So they're not new dollars in terms of the loan, but they are, the 1.9 will be an additional levy. That's correct. Thank you for your question. Anyone else have any comments? We'll declare the public hearing closed. And council, do you have any questions regarding the budget at this time? If not, it... Go ahead. Sure.
Tom, I appreciate your forthright presentation of the budget. We're not trying to hide anything. I mean, on one hand, we could come and say, oh, well, you know, our levy rate is lower than it was last year. Isn't that great?
It is. I mean, we can't say that.
We can't say that, but in fact, it's not really that great a news. And you, I appreciate you being very straightforward about it, so.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Not that I'm happy with what it is, but it's straightforward. At least, we're not hiding anything here.
Well, and you know what, I, I understand that there's an important distinction to make there, but I think the fact that the, that the levy is lower is important also because there are, you know, many people who were comparing us to other communities' levy rates. And on that level, I would prefer to be where we are than where we were last year. So I think it is a good, good thing that our levy rate is also coming a little lower. I would also like to thank Mike Harmon and Joey Messer for the work that they've done on the budget, along with all the department heads and the Ways and Means Committee. So entertain a motion to approve the 1617 city budget.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Thompson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Brassmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The budget passes unanimously. Next, we'll move, council, to a public hearing on adopting plans and specifications for our Step 1 sewer improvements. And ask Melanie to join us. We'll open the public hearing at this time.
We're only going to cover one sheet because I lost the pointer sometime today. I've attached a few sheets of the plans in your council packets. We have talked about this project a lot, but I wanted to go over a few specifics. I was going to say, it's not every day that you spend $5.1 million, but we're, we're finishing it up, so. So I thought I would just go into a little more detail than we normally do with our projects, given the scope of this, given the scope of this one. It is in your packets. It is also on the screen for the public. What this project is, it's Step 1 of the sewer improvements. It is for sanitary sewer to transport basically the east side of town to the wastewater treatment plant. It includes about a mile of pipe with the downstream portion being the wastewater treatment plant that is on the left-hand side of the drawing. And the, it goes about a mile. We have around 2,000 feet of 54-inch pipe, followed by around 3,000 feet of 48-inch pipe. And so it ends at Mint Boulevard, just on the other side of Lamson Woods. So on the map, the green is the permanent easement and the red is the temporary easement. The areas that have been, we've gotten permission through all of the environmental organizations, as well as you have the property rights in order to, to use that area for storage. There's going to be a lot of dirt moved, but, and also equipment staging. There are three entrances on this project for the contractor to use, first being the treatment plant off of Marigold Boulevard. It'll be able to access the site through the treatment plant. The second is a temporary entrance off of eastbound Highway 34. This is, DOT granted this permission only during the boring of, of 34. So of the mile of pipe, about 600 feet of it is going to be bored from right away to right away of 34. Obviously, we can't close it down for construction or anything like that. So it's, it's a rather impressive operation in itself at 600 feet. But the DOT did grant a per, a temporary access off of 34 during that construction. The drill rigs are fairly large and that will be a way for them to access the project. The third entrance is off of Mint Boulevard. And we...
I sure hope that's not one.
That, the third is off of Mint Boulevard. And we have asked the contractor, limited them, that they will not be accessing Mint through Fillmore. But I will point out that they are accessing it through, off of Park. Park is a steel coat road. I do expect that there will be damages to Park, but we haven't put it that the contractor's responsibility to repair that road. Either way, the city pays for those repairs. And with Park being a steel coat road, it's just something to keep in mind, that there will be those, there will be, the heavier traffic will be on Park rather than Fillmore, given the condition of Park existing or already. Another thing I want to point out as far as closings is we are going to have the loop trail closed during this project. When, I'll say, we have it closed for 90 days. When the contractor is in that... contractor is in that direct area. This project, if you look on the next couple sheets, that you'll see this project ranges from 15 feet deep to 50 feet deep. And we definitely do not want the public accessing the construction site. So, we have chain length fence and everything to close off the loop trail during that time. We also have a pedestrian plan, I guess, to say, we will have trail closed signs about a quarter mile away, and then at the nearest kiosks away from there. So, there'll be a sign at Lambs and Woods that says the trail is closed ahead, so you don't make it all the way up the hill at Mint and realize you can't go any further. And we would also have it at the Mazin Barnes, that the trail is closed as you go the other direction. So, and with Stephen Patrick being involved in this project and also being on Trails Council, I have a feeling that they'll be very, well, the public will be informed of the closing when that happens. I did mention the depths. That is one of, other than the size of the pipe, the depth is the other thing that makes this an interesting project. But we do have a lot of interest already. We've gotten calls from all over the Midwest, and we have had plans go out all over the United States on this project. So, we hope to have a good bidding environment. Bids will come in on Thursday morning of St. Patrick's Day. The cost estimates are attached to your agenda. The opinion of probable cost for construction is $5.1 million. And with all of our projects, we pay the contractor based off of, or you pay the contractor based off of what is actually put in. And particularly items 16 through 19, we're going to be working down below, not we, contractor will be working down below the water table. And with the clay soils that are in this area, we have a chance to run into some very, very soft stuff. And so, 16 through 19 is an estimated of the rock that we will need just to support the sides of the pipe so that they can dig it in. And that's going to be one thing that we did our best estimating based off of the soil borings, but when we get there, each, you know, we're going to be looking at each 100 foot at a time in order to make sure that we have a sound foundation for the pipe, and that may require additional rock. But we hope that we have enough budgeted in here. But those are numbers that are going to be, that are going to change. With that being said, that's the most that I wanted to cover unless there are any questions about the scope of this.
Melanie, on this bid, it's, we're asking someone who's going to do the whole job. We're not separating out at all.
Correct.
I see.
The treatment plant and the equalization is another project bid at a different time.
But the whole Step One is one contractor?
Yes. Yep.
Can you just comment on the start date of the construction phase, Lee?
Right. So, rule development requires a calendar day contract. So, it is 450 calendar days that we've allowed the contractor. They are allowed to stop counting those dates if we come to an agreement during the wintertime that they just cannot physically move forward. They have the option of starting as soon as we get the contracts processed, so we could see them start as early as May or June. But they have a late start date of November 1st of this year. If they choose to wait until November 1st, we would be looking at mid-2018 before the project would be completed with that 450 calendar days.
Okay. Thank you, Melanie. Any public comment? It will close the public hearing at this time. So, Melanie, you'd like a resolution then, adopting our plans and specifications for your bid?
Yes.
Okay. So, next item then, council, would be to approve the resolution adopting the plans specifications?
Still moved?
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Melanie. Next, council, we have an application for tax abatement from the Bakers at 115, 117 North Court Street. This is a renovation, residential renovation for $50,000. We entertain your motion to approve the tax abatement.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hallie. Second by Flornoy.
Is this a residential, or is this a business?
Except it's a residential. It's commercial.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I apologize. It is business.
It's a business.
So, this is a commercial abatement. Correct. Any other, pardon me?
Who's second?
Flornoy.
Flornoy.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, we have an action item on our, the revitalization Iowa RISE program. Mike, if you could talk with us about our step this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In your packets is a document that outlines our responsibilities as part of the cooperative agreement with the county and the Iowa Department of Transportation to participate in the paving of 227th Street. So, essentially, what the document says is that we will receive funding up to 55% of the project, and that our total city contribution is $150,000 to the project, which I suspect in 2018, we will fund with either the Capital Improvement Reserve Fund or the Road Use Tax Fund, one of those two funds to pay for our portion of the project. We also have the ability to special assess a portion of the project to the property owners along that, the north side of the street, if the council so wishes. So, basically, what the document says is the county will take the lead on the contract, and that we'll be a party to this. In terms of our requirement for the grant, we need to market the property on the north side of the road in an attempt to attract business. This is the speculative grant application. In other words, we're not required to have a business actually physically locate on the property, but we are required to make marketing efforts and attempt to attract businesses there. And these are value-adding businesses. So, for example, retail is not considered a value-adding business according to the Iowa Department of Transportation. Warehousing, manufacturing, industrial, that type of thing. So, at that time, Mayor, I would open up for any questions regarding the document that the council may have.
Okay. Any questions, council?
No.
Okay. If not, entertain a motion to approve the application on our portion of commitment towards this project.
I would move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Thompson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign?
And I will abstain from this vote because of my employment with the Iowa Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Darren. Appreciate that. Okay. Next, council, we'll invite our water superintendent, Steve Redinger, to walk us through some of the bids that we've received for a water tank painting.
I forgot my reading glasses before I got here, so bear with me. I'll try to read these best I can.
I got another pair in the bag.
We had six bids come in, and this was great news. As you remember, the last time I went for bid, we had to toss those out, and that amount was, and the amount of over $300,000. So, we went back to bid. We didn't change anything except for the timeline. And our low bid that come in was at $124,700.
Good.
For Maguire Iron. So, that was really good news, about a third of the cost. That's our recommendation as to what's then.
Okay. Steve, I do like to make sure that we read and thank all of the other companies that made bids. Since you don't have your glasses, I'll do it.
Thank you. This is small trade.
Yeah, exactly. I saw that. So, our engineer's estimate was $134,000. The bid from Maguire Iron is $128,740. We also received bids from Utility Service Company of Perry, Georgia, for $148,200. Central Tank Coating of Elgin, Iowa, of $160,000. J.B. Stetslar, Stelzer Company of Lincoln, Nebraska, $162,614. TMI Coatings of St. Paul, Minnesota, $198,800. K&amp;W Coatings LLC of Elkhader, Iowa, $235,000. So, we thank all of those who submitted bids. But your recommendation is to award the low bid to Maguire Iron of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, $128,740.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Steve. We appreciate it. When will that work take place?
I believe it will start September 1st, with a completion date by November 30.
Okay. Thank you. As council, I have two board appointments to put before you, both for the Fairfield Media Center. These would be both for reappointments for another term. Werner Elmker and Brian Smith, who are currently board members, would entertain your support for their appointment, reappointment.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Hallie. Second by Revolinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Counsel, I wanted to mention that Mike and I and Chief Thomas have had some discussions the past week, along with the Beautification Commission, about the explosion of graffiti in our city. This is something that's, that if goes unchecked, is something that can really proliferate. There's a lot more graffiti in certain areas of town than I've seen in all the years that I've lived here. And I know it's one of those, you have to be in the right place at the right time type of crimes. It's difficult for our police, but we want to get word out to the public that we would like their assistance in trying to identify some of the folks that are involved with this. You know, there's, if there is a sincere desire for expressing public art, we can deal with that in another way. And there are many cities that do that. They do provide places where graffiti artists can practice what they like to practice, but we'd rather help them make that decision than allow them to put it on our overpasses and trestles and private property buildings and public buildings and really everywhere. If you haven't noticed, it's really quite a proliferation. So, would love to work with our local media about getting the word out on that, but we would definitely like to see curtailment of that so we can start to cover up some of the graffiti that's there now and hopefully move beyond this.
They are coming?
Yes.
I have read about, a little bit about what other cities have done, you know, when they, when faced with this problem, especially like New York City. One of the things they did that really actually worked was, as soon as the graffiti went up, like the very same day or the very next day, it was painted over. They would, you know, like in the subways, they would like paint the subways every morning almost. They had to do that. But at some point, the people who'd made the graffiti realized that they weren't going to get a chance to show their thing, so they just stopped bothering. But that's how they, that's how they got over it. And I'm not necessarily saying that we, I mean, it would be nice if we could do that.
Well, it is very true, and that's the conversation we had with the Beautification Commission, because they do get grant money from Keep Iowa Beautiful organization every year. And Keep Iowa Beautiful has the same philosophy, that if you do experience community graffiti, that you try to get it painted over immediately, because it does discourage. So, we, if we can get some dollars and volunteers to do that, we will.
Good.
And finally, council, I wanted to mention that there are plans underway for our grand opening of the Cambridge Sportplex, or the Rec Center, which will be Saturday, March 19th. And we'll have a grand opening at 10:00 a.m. There'll be activities for kids, athletic activities all day long. We'll have a brief ceremony and recognize some of our donors, but hopefully, council, you can all get it on your calendars as well for Saturday morning, March 19th. Mike, anything that you'd want to add to that? No?
The project is coming along nicely. I think we should be ready.
What time of day?
10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m.
Okay. That's all I have in my report. We'll move to, let's see, our administrator and department reports. Anything?
I've got nothing at this time.
So, we have a Public Safety and Transportation Committee under that, so is there a Public Safety and Transportation Committee report?
Yes, Mayor. We met immediately preceding the council meeting tonight. Agenda items that were discussed tonight, we had a lovely presentation from some students that had done an analysis on both pedestrian safety and sidewalks here in Fairfield, and they have picked a specific area that they're looking at and studying, and came before us tonight and thought what their next steps might be. And they are looking at a sidewalk to take pedestrians from more or less the corner near Burger King, around the backside of Jefferson, to access the park and rec. And both Mike and Melanie gave some great next steps for the students, so we'll be interested to see what they come up with next. We addressed the Second Street safety concerns that were brought before the council in January. A no parking sign will be posted tomorrow, Darrell? Yes? At a corner of concern, and that will hopefully make turning onto and off of that corner a little more safe on South Second. Further down the road, regarding a fence concern, we have decided to take no further action at this time. The fence is constructed within ordinance, and the property owners have made a decision not to change that fence. And right now, that is within their rights, and we've chosen not to pursue any further action. We're looking at, the visioning project had presented the idea at Burlington Avenue and Highway 1, that possibly the crossing north to south, is, the timing on that light maybe isn't long enough for some citizens to get across. Right now, due to our very tight, but lovely budget, we don't feel that's something we can look into, but down the road, we did discuss some solutions that might help mediate that, such as a countdown light, rather than extending the time and jeopardizing traffic backup on Highway 1, but maybe giving a more visual countdown. So, that's something that we might look into down the road. And then Darrell brought before the committee tonight, at the corner of Madison and Fifth, which is a T-intersection, that maybe a yield sign would be called for. We think that maybe years ago, there was a yield sign there that might have been taken down during construction and not put back. So, the committee did recommend that we get a yield sign put back there, and that will come back before the council.
Oh, come before the council. Okay. Very good. Thank you for your report, Katie. Appreciate that. Any other business for the council? Not entertain a motion to adjourn?
Moved to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton. Second by?
Second.
Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Meeting adjourned.